Regular meeting number 18 will now come to order. We please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Reamy, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel was pleased to have Pastor Vaughn Cook of Gethsemane United Methodist Church here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Thank you, Councilman Harden. Thank you, Councilman Gates, and God bless you all. Let us pray. Our Father, we ask your blessings on the people we have called to be our leaders in our community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in this noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it's their responsibility and ours to serve the common good for all. Remind us all that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant us all the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. Collectively speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. Also being guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love, this we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and true and right. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Reamy. Uh, Dorans. Still getting used to the new chairs.
Yeah.
No resolutions this evening, President Harden. However, I do have a group I'd like to recognize. I'm pleased to welcome the 20 members of the Department of Neighborhoods' New American Leadership Academy. I'd like to invite the academy participants, as well as Director William Scott, to the The New American Leadership Academy, sponsored by the Department of Neighborhoods, is a leadership and a professional development program focused on civic engagement of our new American residents. Participants will receive mentorship, professional development, and cover topics such as government, civic responsibilities, and implicit bias. The academy selects individuals who are ready to grow and enhance their knowledge of civic engagement, community stewardship, leadership, and discover new ways to contribute to our community. On behalf of Columbus City Council, congratulations to you all on your selection to be a part of the New American Leadership Academy. We all very much appreciate your willingness to make this commitment to become even more deeply involved in our community. For Columbus to thrive, it's critical that our diverse communities be engaged, and thank you for doing that. Now I'd invite Director William Scott to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to have our New American Leadership Academy class attend city council. This is our spring cohort, excuse me, our second group. These 20 individuals who are members of this New American Leadership Academy trace their roots to 14 different nations and range in ages from 19 to 60. They follow in the footsteps of our first class of 21 leaders from the inaugural cohort which was completed last fall. It is critical for the health of our neighborhoods that all of our diverse communities have a voice and a seat at the table. This program provides up-and-coming new American leaders the knowledge they need to be engaged with their area commission and/or neighborhood civic organizations. Tonight, this group will attend their first session, and it is focused on the role of city and local government. After they leave council, they will hear from a panel that consists of city auditor Megan Kilgore, Judge Jaisa Page, and Stephen Dunbar from our city attorney's office. I appreciate the fact that all of you are so supportive of this program. In addition to city government, in addition to learning about city government, the class will participate in sessions on civic engagement, strategic collaborations, and personal development. Thank you again for this opportunity to introduce our New American Leadership Academy class to you. After this, they will need to excuse themselves to get started with their first class, so again, thank you.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate it, and thank you again all for the commitment that you've made to our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
That is all I have this evening, President Harden. Thank you, Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Favors.
I have two resolutions to present tonight. If I could have Mary Howard, Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer of the East Hospital, and Autumn Glover, Government Affairs and Community Relations, to come up to the podium. So tonight, we're going to honor and congratulate the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center East Hospital on their 20-year anniversary of service to the Columbus community. Continuing a 107-year legacy of hospital care on the Near East Side of Columbus, the Ohio State University purchased the hospital formerly known as St. Anthony's and Park Medical Center in 1999 with the goal of extending the academic medical center's mission of patient care, teaching, and research in a unique way to serve this community. East Hospital's care services have grown exponentially over the years. All of Ohio State's addiction medicine services are now located at Talbot Hall, which has provided high-quality, comprehensive drug and alcohol addiction recovery services since 1974. Additionally, Ohio State's Family Medicine created the Urban Family Medicine Program to train future primary care physicians, and the imaging systems were transitioned over to fully digital systems. With the City of Columbus and the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, the university supports Partners Achieving Community Transformation, or PACT, which is making great strides to create healthy, financially, and environmentally sustainable Near East Side community where residents have access to safe and affordable housing, quality health care, and education and employment opportunities. Established in 2000, the annual Community Health Day serves the community through free advi-- three, excuse me, through free health advice and screenings in a celebratory environment of entertainment, food, and giveaways. Over these 20 years, Ohio State has modernized every facility in the hospital to the highest standards. Each patient care unit and department has been updated and has had all public areas of the hospitals. To support excellent patient care, Ohio State improved nearly every aspect of the infrastructure of the hospital, from emergency power to information technology. This council does hereby congratulate Ohio State University's Wexner Medical Center East Hospital on 20 years of medical services to the City of Columbus.
Thank you very much.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I would just extend a brief thank you on behalf of Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center East Hospital, and thank you so much for your resolution and expression for us for our 20 years of history, and as you mentioned, our 107-year legacy that we are so proud of to continue that service to the Near East Side, and just want everyone to know that we are committed to being here for the long haul, and also thank you for your partnership with us for PACT, and we look forward to many, many more years of service. So it's 20 years and counting. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Comments?
Don't want, hey, come on back. So I think it was just about a year ago now that you came on board over there. Is that correct?
A little over a year, that's correct.
And things have been looking great over there, and we really thank you for your commitment to the neighborhood. I know the people that live in the neighborhood really appreciate your commitment and the strengthening of services around the area. So I just have to ask, how's it going, one year in?
It is going like a little over a year, believe it or not, but it's going extremely well. We have a lot of exciting things happening, growth. Many of you know about our $26 million project to expand our OR services, and we have opportunity to expand some of our beds in upcoming months by spring of next year, so we're ultimately so excited about that, so thank you so much. It's been going great.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the support of the community for us as well.
Thank you so much.
Are there any additional comments? If not, I would move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Not awkward at all. And then my last resolution, if I could have the members of Sisters of Empowerment, as well as the Director of Serve Ohio, Ms. Rebecca, to the podium. Sisters of Empowerment, a faith-centered nonprofit organization, was founded in 2011 by three tenacious and dedicated women, Elise Ferguson, Margaret Rembert, and, excuse me, Lois Ferguson. Specializing in community-driven service, SOE strives to improve the economic position of our underserved communities in Columbus through education and training. Staying true to their core values, SOE continues to serve the community with an open heart through its Power Up program series. Power Up promotes job readiness, financial stability, productive life skills, and homebuyer education. Serve Ohio honors outstanding people, groups, and initiatives who make great contributions to their local communities and the state through service and volunteerism. The Serve Ohio Awards recognize volunteers, service groups, corporate groups, and volunteer initiatives throughout the state of Ohio. Sisters of Empowerment has demonstrated their commitment to community service and has now been awarded the 2019 Serve Ohio recipient for the Central Ohio Region for their dedication of service to the Columbus-Linden community. And I'd like to just say, I'm going to turn it over to you all, there's only five awards that are given out every single year, one for each region in the state of Ohio, so out of 55 applicants, Sisters of Empowerment has been designated as the award recipient for this year. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Favors and members of city council. We are delighted to be able to award these tenacious and amazing women the Serve Ohio Award, and the awards are a product of a lot of support throughout the state. We are given money through the Honda of America Manufacturing as well as American Electric Power, so thank you to them as well. And the Sisters of Empowerment will receive a grant of $1,000 that they can use toward their amazing services that they offer to the community. So on behalf of Serve Ohio, on behalf of the Governor, and on behalf of all that we do, we thank Sisters of Empowerment for the amazing work that they do in the Linden community, and we will give this award to them. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Grossman, and very pleased to have nominated this group of wonderful women for what they do for the Linden community, and I have here a resolution from Governor Mike DeWine to share with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies?
Good evening, everyone. President Harden, Councilwoman Shayla Favors, we are so appreciative of each of you on this evening, and we want to say thank you. We not only want to say thank you to council and to Serve Ohio, but we want to say thank you to those in the Linden community who support us so readily and who are our partners, and they're right at the back, and I'd like to ask them to stand if they would, please. We applaud you. So many of them have worked with us down through these eight years of service and partnered with us in ways that we cannot even begin to say, as we have helped hundreds and thousands of persons coming through our programs and into our classes so that we can take them into another level of self-sufficiency. And we wanted to say thank you. The funds that we will receive from this grant will move us towards that goal and that dream that we have of getting and securing a facility. It's going to be right in the Linden area, and we're going to call it the Empowerment Center. We look forward to doing greater things in Columbus. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. Thank you so much for giving us these awards on tonight. We are certainly appreciative.
Are there any comments from my colleagues? If not, I'd move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Congratulations. That is all for my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Favors. Councilmember Reamy.
Yes, I wanted to make sure. I just have a couple announcements. Just a reminder, we have community hours on Wednesday at Cafe Curorak, or something like that, at 2250 North High Street, 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. And then next Tuesday, April 16th, at Cafe Phoenix at 39 East Gay from 4:00 to 5:30. So we welcome anyone and everyone that wants to come out and have my ear, and my staff's here, to stop by and say hi. Thanks so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to make note and make sure this council is on the record for celebrating the life and legacy of community activist and advocate, Mr. Ruben Herrera. His work and his impact will be felt in our community for decades to come, and we're very grateful for his advocacy. Are there any comments from our elected officials? City Attorney, City Auditor?
Yes, good evening. Councilmembers, just a couple quick points here. Last Thursday, we released our annual, comprehensive annual financial report, which is both the annual audit for the City of Columbus as well as our large 350-page-plus financial report. This is now available on our website, but we're doing a lot of public outreach as well. We got it out, this all due credit goes to Marnie Hall, who's our office's Director of Financial Reporting, a team of about 15 people in the office, and a lot of the directors and division heads who really make it a priority, because we're able to get our financial report out so quickly. We're one of the largest cities in the entire nation to do so. We got it out in 87 days. It's really remarkable, because that means the information is super fresh in the hands of Wall Street, in the hands of our potential investors, and it really does make a very big deal. It's a lot to be proud of, and again, thank you to the directors in the room here. Separately, want to thank you all for your outreach and helping us convey, for the first time ever, our Division of Income Tax did Saturday hours. We started them this last Saturday. We've also done a tremendous amount of citizen outreach, going out and talking to citizen groups, talking to neighborhood commissions, educating new business owners on their responsibilities of paying their municipal income tax. Again, giving credit where credit's due, Beth Brink, Outreach Chief Administrative Officer in Income Tax, has been hitting the pavement every day. Alone today, over 65 people came in as walk-ins, and we were able to help them with their taxes. Over the period of month of March, about 630, and we expect that to fully ramp up. By about 8:15 a.m. on Saturday morning alone, we had 16 taxpayers there. A lot of the credit also to the Director of Neighborhoods, Ms. Williams Scott, because of their ability to help us translate our forms and provide in-person interpretation, which is another added customer service option that we have for our taxpayers. So please remember that we do have our Saturday hours, this Saturday again, 8 a.m. to noon, and we're standing by with auditors on hand to help folks get their taxes done. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the quick turnaround. I saw a cake recognizing the 87-day turnaround. It really is a big deal, and we applaud your office. City Treasurer, see the Judge Barrows is in the house? All right, and I see several members of our area commissions here. Welcome. Welcome, Ms. Barrows. At this time, I request the following ordinance be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda, and it's Economic Development Ordinance 0800-2019. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30 legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 804-864-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 65-790-802-828-857-881-882-887-904-2019. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance 840-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 799-908-2019. Economic Development Committee ordinance 914-2019. Zoning Committee ordinance is 883-884-899-901-910-911-912-936-937, and 482-2019.
We don't have any speakers on the first reading agenda, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 124X, 121X, and 123X-2019. Finance Committee ordinance is 508-650-732-795-805-903-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 761-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance 849-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 687-850-2019. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance 843-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 824-894-898-2019. Housing Committee ordinance 892-2019. Economic Development Resolution 113X-2019. Ordinance is 860-861-862-921-922-2019. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 830-880-2019. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 833-2019, and Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A055-56-57-58-59-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. We have Mr. William Cameron. Mr. Cameron, welcome to council. Speaking for ordinance 0892 in the Housing Committee. Would you please state your name, address, and any organization you may represent?
Yes, my name is William Cameron. Address is 48 East North Broadway, Columbus, Ohio. I'm representing Bread Organization. And here's a story. My name is William Cameron. I'm representing Bread Organization. I support the organization. We support the ordinance up for vote. More services like this is needed, and addition to truly affordable housing is needed. Here's my story. My mom died in 2000. I ended up in a downward swing. I spent 18 months in prison writing a bad check, Hocking County. I lived in Lancaster for a while, came back to Columbus. I struggled to find a place to live decent rent. Spent 90 days in faith missing before I had to leave. YMCA rehousing program to faith missing helped me get housing, but it wasn't a nice place to live. There was infestations. Electric and gas was turned off. I had to work with the city attorney to get satisfaction. Since I received SSI, only get about 500 a month. I'm going on 61, single man with a record like me, need options for safe, affordable housing. Families need more options too. Bread has been down here every time you all meet, it's because we want the city to encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families that make less than $42,000 a year, and give an additional $5 million per year to Affordable Housing Trust. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Look forward to working with you and Bread as we work on a comprehensive housing strategy, and we appreciate Bread's advocacy, and I think my office is in touch with representatives from Bread. We wanted to sit down and make sure that we are sharing as much information about where we are right now, where we're trying to go, and incorporating your advocacy into our plans. Chair, do you have any additional comments?
No, I would just echo the comments you've made, President Harden. I've met with the officials over at Bread about a month or so ago, and so I'm also looking forward to continuing those conversations.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Cameron. Are there any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items as needed as consent action? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Consent items pass. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First in finance tonight, we have ordinance 0717-2019 to authorize the city treasurer to modify its contracts for various banking services with JP Morgan Chase Bank, Huntington Bank, and Fifth Third Bank, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,825,000 from various funds within the city and to declare an emergency. In 2012, the treasurer's office issued a request for proposal for banking services. The Columbus Depository Commission, consisting of city treasurer, city auditor, and director of finance and management, received proposals from six local banks and recommended banking services with JPMC, Huntington, and Fifth Third. The contracts are for a period of 10 years beginning in 2013, subject to annual appropriations and approval by council. This ordinance is the seventh of 10 possible extensions of the original contracts. Emergency action is being considered to maintain accurate and up-to-date accounting and to prevent interruptions in banking services. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Reamy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, in finance, we have ordinance 0811-2019 to authorize the mayor or the director of finance and management to execute of Finance and Management to execute and deliver on behalf of the city the first supplement to the cooperative agreement dated as of January 1st, 2010, with the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority and Franklin County pertaining to the construction of a convention center hotel expansion. The proposal before us provides financial backing for the addition of approximately 470 guest rooms and 54,100 square feet of convention meeting space to augment the current 500-room downtown Hilton Hotel. Last week, we hosted a public meeting to discuss this agreement in detail. We heard from the Convention Facilities Authority and Experience Columbus regarding the need for this expansion, the plans to implement it, and the benefits it provides. Specifically, the new 1,000-room hotel will allow Columbus to compete regionally and nationally to host large conferences and sporting events that require the capacity of a 1,000-room hotel and convention center. Hosting these events contributes to the success of Columbus's economy. We currently welcome 41 million visitors annually who bring $7 billion in direct visitor spending, support more than 78,000 jobs, and generate $48 million in bed taxes that support human services in the arts. We expect that this expansion will only increase these economic benefits. The city will not pay for the construction of the hotel expansion. Rather, a portion of the bonds used to finance the project will be split and backed by the city and county in equal parts. Doing so will yield better interest rates and result in overall savings for the project. This has been a lengthy process, and I want to thank all parties, including the county, the mayor, and our Finance Department, for the diligent work putting together this agreement. I especially want to thank Auditor Megan Kilgore for her work ironing out the financial details of the city's involvement and always keeping the city's financial protection as her North Star. Auditor Kilgore, is there anything you want to add on the financials? Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Whenever public dollars are on the line, the bar is high for what kind of economic benefit we will reap. That's why City Council prioritized several key additions to this agreement. First and foremost, already, the hotel is a public works project and therefore will pay prevailing wages to the skilled workers who build the hotel. However, the work isn't done when the construction is over. The hospitality workers who keep the completed hotel running every day ensure its long-term success. That is why we've included language in this ordinance to require a living wage, at least $15 per hour, for the hospitality workers employed by the hotel. Living wage jobs are important to this council. Living wages help residents support their families, afford stable housing, and access opportunity. Living wages also confer a benefit right back to the employer. Better-paid workers are also better-trained workers who can afford to keep their jobs longer. Last but not least, living wage jobs are critical to maintaining a healthy city budget, which is reliant on income taxes and which suffers when wages are stagnant or low. As Mark Fluharty with the Central Ohio Labor Council pointed out last week at our hearing, living wages are important, but health insurance and other benefits are also vital. They're vital supports that help workers at every level secure a path to the middle class. That's why we've asked the CFA to ensure the hotel has a neutrality agreement in place, which will mean workers may freely unionize without interference from their employer if they choose to do so. Thank you to Don Brown and to the CFA Board for making living wages and good benefits a priority. I also want to thank members of this council, in particular, Councilmember Rob Dorans, for the support and partnership to fight for family-supporting jobs. When we leverage public resources to prioritize the needs of workers, we benefit our entire community. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Dorans.
Just one comment, Chair Brown. I just want to echo your statements, thanking the folks who are involved on this, your leadership, Council President Harden, the Convention Authority, the county, the administration. This is a great example of what we can do to help lift wages in our community. People talk about ways that we can affect the ability of working families to provide good jobs that provide health care and benefits for them and their families. This is exactly the kind of partnership that this city should be engaging in with our partners to make that happen. And I've been proud to work with you, Chair Brown, and the other members I mentioned earlier to make this happen. So just wanted to say thank you for having the opportunity and looking forward to seeing this project move forward.
Thank you, councilmember. Council President.
Chair, I just want to follow up with Councilmember Dorans' remarks. I so appreciated your leadership throughout this process. We are... The legislation that we're voting on tonight, the ordinance that we're voting on tonight, is not where we started, and I think that that means that we got better because of your engagement, because of council's engagement, and because of the administration and auditor and all those folks. I thank, echo, and thanking Don Brown and the administrators for being a good partner with us as we move this very, very, very important project forward. This will give us a physical representation of the city that we are becoming. And now, it's not just the physical beauty, but it's the beauty of making sure that the folks that work in building it and in working there get a part of this Columbus that we're so proud of. So thank you so much for your leadership. It really was something I'm very proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for that description of the end goal here. I think that's exactly right. Questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I would first like to, pursuant to Section 441B of the City Charter, I would like to wave, move to waive second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Waived.
I would like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Amended.
And I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in finance. May I move to education?
Please.
Thank you. In Education Committee, we have ordinance 0493-2019 to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations to provide educational services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,029,901.25 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding before us is for Early Start Columbus, our program that expands access to high-quality pre-kindergarten for children through partnerships with pre-K providers. In short, we are giving scholarships to four-year-olds to attend high-quality pre-K when their parents otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it. These dollars are leveraged with funds from the Ohio Department of Education and Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to maximize the number of children served. Early Start providers have demonstrated their ability to provide a high-quality pre-kindergarten education and are rated at least three stars in the state's Step Up to Quality rating system. We know that quality early education significantly improves literacy, language, and math skills. Children who are academically ready when they reach kindergarten are more likely to succeed throughout life. This is the basis of our efforts to expand access to high-quality pre-K through Early Start Columbus. I truly believe that funding for early childhood education is one of the best investments we can make as a city and as a society, and Director Shoney, I would say, one of the best economic development investments we can make because we're investing in kids for the future and we're investing in their parents today to be able to keep a job, work a job that supports their family. I want to offer special thanks to Director Rhonda Johnson and Deputy Director Matt Smido, who live and breathe quality early childhood education every day. I want to thank you for your ongoing work making these investments every year in our kids. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 791-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Incorporated for the Economic and Community Development Schottenstein's Program, AKA Parsons Village Street Improvement Project, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of funds in an amount up to $2,959,381.28 from the Community Development Block Grant revolving loan fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. The work for this project consists of constructing improvements on Parsons Avenue, Barthman Avenue, Washington Avenue, Ennis Avenue, and Reeve Avenue. They include roadway milling and overlaying, curbs, sidewalks, curb extensions with landscaping, on-street parking areas, street trees, decorative post-top lights, storm drain improvements, and waterline improvements. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 0806-2019 to authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to execute a professional service contract with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio relative to researching job creation opportunities around Smart Columbus initiatives, to transfer funds between object classes within the Smart City Private Grant Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the Smart City Private Grant and to declare an emergency. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And last in this committee, we have ordinance number 0837-2019 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the roadway's improvement project, Creative Campus Phase II, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. May I move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary?
Please.
We have ordinance number 581-2019, and if I could have Mr. Jonathan Nelson approach the podium. This ordinance will authorize the Administrative and Presiding Judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with Alvis Incorporated for the Work Release Program, to authorize the expenditure of up to $125,000 for work release services from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Mr. Nelson agreed to come down to speak on behalf of his personal experience in the program, but I just wanted to give everyone just some numbers so they can have an idea of the impact this program actually has. So there's a 95% success rate with the Work Release Program, and it saves the city in 2018 over $62,000. That is nearly 50% of the rate that would cost to house somebody in jail versus going through the Alvis House Program. That's a pretty phenomenal number there. The program allows an individual to serve their term while continuing to work. They're able to contribute to society, take care of their family, and take care of the offense that's at hand. Anyone that's facing a charge that carries jail time could be eligible for the Work Release Program, and Judge Barrows could probably give us some additional information if need be, but that's how important this program is to the city of Columbus. So, Mr. Nelson, any comments you'd like to add?
I mean, that's helped me. Sitting in jail, you know, doing nothing. I'm able to go to work, take care of my kids, and get back on my feet, so. Yeah. I believe that's a good thing.
Wonderful. Judge Barrows, would you like to add anything?
Mr. Nelson, thank you very much, Councilmember Faber. Council President Harden, members of council. Mr. Nelson is one of the... We had 71 successful participants during the year 2018, and he's following in their footsteps. A person who might otherwise go to jail, is able to keep their jobs, support their family, pay taxes, instead of sitting in jail, doing nothing, and being a drain on the community. I want to, on behalf of Mr. Nelson, everyone else situated, and the Franklin County Municipal Court, thank this council for its continued support of this program through the years, and specifically to thank you very much for putting it into our budget, so I won't have to come down here and beg for the money anymore. Thank you very much for that. And to Mr. Jim Giordello, convey to the Finance Director that I apologize publicly for fronting him out in front of all of you, but I'm glad we got what we needed. And to you, sir, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and thank you, Judge Barrows. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And the last one is ordinance number 0888-2019 to authorize the Administrative and Presiding Judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with Alvis Incorporated for assessment specialist services to authorize the expenditure of up to $50,000 for assessment services from the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The court was awarded a grant which is provided from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services. This award was for the $50,000 to cover the cost of assessment specialist services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all we have.
Thank you, Chair Faber. The next committee to come before council is the Environment Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, we have ordinance number 382-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders and associate relevant purchase agreements with multiple vendors for the purchase of refuse collection containers and parts per the terms and conditions of citywide contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $1,080,000 or so much thereof as may be needed from the Division of Refuse Collections Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service Division of Refuse Collection utilizes 96-gallon, 300-gallon, eight-cubic-yard roll-off containers and other types of containers as needed in its mechanized collection system for residential trash collection. The Division also requires replacement parts for containers that are not covered by warranties. The Purchase Office has completed bidding or has established universal term contracts for the purchase of these commodities. This legislation authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for the Division of Refuse Collection from established universal term contracts or completed bids. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And if you, with your permission, Council President Harden, I'd like to go back to consent, page 13 in Economic Development.
Thank you.
Tonight, I would like to invite Kenny McDonald, the President Chief Economic Officer of Columbus 2020, to the podium as I read ordinance number 800-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract with Columbus 2020 in an amount up to $700,000 for economic development activities associated with business relocation, expansion, and retention, as well as other activities related to the city of Columbus' continued interest in workforce development, marketing, and entrepreneurship, to authorize the expenditure of $700,000 from the 2019 General Fund operating budget and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract in the amount of up to $700,000 from Columbus 2020. Columbus 2020 is a private nonprofit entity incorporated as both a 501(c)(6) and 501(c)(3). It serves as the economic development organization for the 11-county Columbus region. The mission is to generate opportunity and build capacity for economic growth throughout central Ohio. I will turn the mic over to you, Mr. McDonald, and let you share some of the accomplishments that you've achieved so far and where we're going next.
Well, thank you, Councilmen President Harden, members of council. Thank you for your time and your leadership. Let me begin there. So as we approach the end of the decade, I can't thank this council enough for its leadership of building and making hard decisions to make this a better and better city over the course of the last decade. 2018 was an exceptional year in economic development across our entire metro area and region, and also here in the city of Columbus. It was one of our most impactful years. We secured commitments for nearly 8,000 jobs across our region, 3,100 of which were here in the city of Columbus. I had a couple of facts about those projects. Those are projects that are being built now and will be built over the next 18 to 24 months and create jobs, not only in the construction period, but for years to come. That brought $301 million of capital investment to the city of Columbus last year, $182 million of payroll committed for the future of every year going into the future, and that's a very conservative estimate. 1,500 jobs were retained in that process, so companies that we helped to grow here did not go somewhere else and take the jobs that they currently have in the city of Columbus elsewhere. And most exciting is the average salary of those jobs overall was north of $58,000 or up. or up, fifty-eight thousand six-hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, living wage jobs across the board in a number of industries, making this a more diverse city and the economy better and better. What is perhaps more exciting is that the assets of the city continue to grow and get better because of your leadership and the decisions you're making, and that's everything from flights at CMH that connect us to markets now around the country that we didn't have in San Francisco and Seattle and Salt Lake, to what's happening in the investments in the nationwide children's investments in the corridor that they're building and the opportunities we now have for companies in gene therapy through those investments and the talent that they're bringing to the community. Investments by Ohio State jointly with the city to make the corridors between Ohio State and downtown one of the strongest corridors in the state of Ohio, and obviously saving the crew is something that we keenly watched as a region that's continuing to grow their brand.
Yes.
And seemingly not losing anymore either, which is good. A couple of additional things. As I think about two thousand nineteen, we've got an incredibly fast start to this year, where we've already announced fifteen hundred jobs for this region with average salaries over sixty thousand, with additional commitments likely to come that will get us to thirty-five-hundred jobs by the end of mid-year. So very quick start to the year, giving us confidence for continuing to grow and build infrastructure around this. And finally, we are working very, very hard on a couple of things. One is the strategy for the next ten years, and every day we get a little bit more excited about what's to come. We're also daunted by the challenge that we have every day. So with all these great numbers and all the growth that we've had, the question of the next decade is clearly, can we both have growth and prosperity across the board? And the decisions you're making, the investments you're making, not only in economic development but in the communities and in workforce development, are critically important to helping us solve those issues. We did over two hundred stakeholder meetings across our region, many of which were, of course, in the city of Columbus this past year, and we did tons and tons of comparative research with our peers around the country, and the number-one narrative is about growth and prosperity. How can we achieve that, and can we be a city that sets ourselves apart as we both grow? We all want to grow, but can we do so and bring more and more people along that journey and up the path to prosperity? And housing, the investments you're making in housing, the investments you're making in Smart Columbus are all contributors to our future success, so thank you very much for that. It makes our jobs easier every day when you do that, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, Council Pro Tem Liz Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember. Nice to see you, Mr. McDonald. I am wondering if you happen to know or if there is a reason why you'd measure in average wages rather than median wages, and I just would put a little plug in for measuring in median wages, if it's possible to do, given part of our problem in Columbus, and where this is not unique to us, is sort of the hollowing out of the middle, and that median wages may be a good way for us to keep track of what you're citing correctly as a goal, which is not just to grow but to truly prosper for everyone.
So the average wages are just the, the average of the projects that we locate and the wages that they intend to pay across the board? We do look at median wages for those projects, and some research that we did the past six months or so is leading us down that path. It would say, you'll hear us speak not just of median wages but some indices that are comparing the top ten percent with the bottom ten percent, and some housing indices and things like that that go with that, so we can determine actually what is a path to prosperity for people. We would agree that that's a, that's a better measure overall. So we double-click on most of these numbers, and when you get past the headlines, those are, those are the kinds of things that we need to be discussing to make it a better city.
Great. Thank you for that. Thanks for that leadership.
Thank you very much, Kenny. We appreciate your leadership and all the commitment to the central Ohio region. It's much appreciated. Do you have an announcement on the name yet?
No, no announcement tonight, sir.
All right. All right. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have tonight in economic development.
Thank you, Chair Remy. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion for adjournment? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Council is adjourned.